A couple houses I couldn't find.
Still isn't open.
Yeah, we got a hot mic guys, so just letting you know. Meeting's in progress.
Okay, let's stand, come and open the meeting. Give me your preservation committee and please have the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance.
United States of America. We are one nation, under God, the free will of the liberty of all.
Okay, I do have some agendas, if we don't have them out. We have agendas?
Yeah.
Everybody got one?
I don't know if any of you have.
Does anyone have an agenda?
I'll just take one if you have one.
May I please?
I have some. And we also have the minutes. Last meeting too. Is there? Anybody else? Oh, can I have one?
Okay. Yeah, I just need one. Yeah, whatever record it was, we want to set up. Extra pen? No, I'm good. You want a pen?
Which one of those?
Okay. So, you want to list the records?
Yeah.
Dave, Tim, start with the hand.
Did you want to say my email that said that you forgot?
Yeah, so.
I'm all set.
I mean, yeah, I know they still exist. So, we have to.
Yeah.
They don't come.
Oh, is it my side? Yeah.
I think we should do that.
Okay.
We have to go back to town, we have to do the financial returns.
Yeah.
One of them could be returned.
Yeah. Okay, everybody's got an agenda, let's go to the minutes. Anyone who needs to take a look at the minutes, if there's any additions or corrections, I just want to have your plans out on them. If there's any, then we'll make it. I want to approve those quick and then we're going to do the playground.
I'm making a motion to approve the minutes for the last meeting.
Second?
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call. Dave Marvell?
Aye.
Adele?
Aye.
Tim Ryan?
Sorry.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Wood?
Aye.
Mr. Erickson?
Aye.
I'm good, I'm.
Oh.
Aye.
Mr. Digits?
Dave Rosa?
Aye.
And myself, aye, so it's unanimous. Okay. So, let's open up on. I guess if we consider this whole business, we kind of, we're going to, we're going to talk about this move in this application for the park recreation funding for this, for the, this proposal. Part of it is this, if you can see it, well, we can pass this around again if anybody needs to refresh or anybody hasn't seen this. This is the rendering of the, I got that from Kevin, Mr. Smith from the Park and Rec Chairman. And if anyone, there's two shots of the rendering. And is there anything else you want to say about it or anything? You're good. So, basically, if you want to, you can take a look at that, that's basically what they're trying to plug into that area. Plus, there's some work that wants to be done on the, needs to be done on the fence, the landscaping, the lighting, the stuff like that. And there are some monies that were already approved at town meeting. And that's for some items. But then everybody should have, hopefully, was able to digest the all materials, it's a lot, we're getting a lot of applications, but we do have to cut off now. So, I'm going to open it up with some discussion, I would just, if somebody wants to say anything.
I have a question. On the field, in the field, playground, will that be in the front, will this be in the, in the front or in the back?
So, that's in the front right-hand corner.
What happens to the little league field that's there?
It's exactly the way it is. The little, the field is not moving at all. The pace.
So, the little league field will stay?
Did you want to get on the camera up here to speak?
Yeah.
So, the little league field will stay as is?
As is.
So, that's not going to be interrupted?
So, if you're looking at the property.
Yep.
And if you're looking at the background of the baseball field, that it's going to sit, there's a large grass area to the right, and that's where this is going to sit.
And there'll be a fence.
So, then there also too, and it's not shown in the rendering, but around the playground itself, there'll be a four-foot tall fence gated, so it can be closed. And then also, there's provisions for a wooden guardrail, much like what's in front of the police station, along Prospect Street. So, that way you have a buffer from the road.
Okay, so that's. I have a question I should tell this, um, here. Are the lights still working?
The lights do work. So, part of, and unrelated to this project, but part of the prior funding that was done was to do the ballfield fence over and then the lighting. We're still trying to, because some time has passed, so obviously the cost of materials and things like that have changed. We actually, it should be going out to an invitation for bid to replace, it's really about 80% of the baseball field fencing. And then we're still working on some rough figures before we do an invitation for bid to address the lighting. But the lighting is functioning, but it's severely outdated. The thing that's tough with that project is, you know, if it was an actual, double-edged sword, TMLP has great grades, but they don't offer rebate on lighting to retrofit it from the technology that's there to LED. So, you end up paying a little bit more for the fixtures. There's not like a real benefit to go after a rebate or anything like that, but.
Yeah, so sometimes they.
Well, no, it depends on it, because it's TML, yeah, it's TMLP providing power, so there's no real. We're starting to see some municipal lighting plants start to give back rebates for certain things. I'm not sure if this would fall, it's typically what the offset's going to be, you know, what the wattage usage is using the technology that's there versus switching over to LED. But we are, myself and the Arm Building Commission and Mr. Ryan, are looking into, you know, what happens, we can use it to change that lighting, you know, as inexpensively as possible, using those previously allocated funds.
This is your problem, I don't think, but is there any improvement in the parking or just staying?
No, the parking, they'll be self-separate to this. There'll be some grading that goes on in part of this project that will help at least level off what's there. And then Parks and Rec just in general has been moving towards it. It's part of actually our capital requests over the next few years. And park lots is like number one on our agenda at all of our facilities, so that's what we'd like to do. And two, just to, again, it's kind of unrelated to the playground, but ties into the whole facility. Part of what we're doing with that fencing project is actually the left field fence which runs on School Street will actually kind of, it kicks way out at an angle now. We're actually going to line it more up with the follow line of the baseball field, because then it does allow for us to have space to actually have off-street parking there. But as far as like the funding request, it's like pretty much strictly pertains to the playground itself, none of that, the other projects are either private CPC funding or our parks.
Chairman, for your to the applicant, I'm just curious, I see it on the second page, it's on the E, Alvin, St. Dawson, so on. Where's on the accompanying documentation that says that the commission of disability signed out the open space committee? Who's talking to DTI, no guy in PTO, I know children's library, I've got little league and the police department. I've had excessive conversations with the chief of police and he has absolutely told me this is safety accident. Absolute safety hazard. Him, the lieutenant, every officer in the dark net force has told me the same thing. Where are the accompanying documents to say that you have?
Where are the accompanying documents saying that it's unsafe?
All these people that say they've endorsed this. Where are they?
Where's the accompanying document saying that it's unsafe? I had a, I had a conversation with Lieutenant.
Well, you just said you have it in writing here, so if you're going to, if you're going to have something to come into the record, then where is the accompanying documents to be provided? I don't know why, it's go by the CPC law, again, I want to say this, Mr. Chairman. The Massachusetts state law, under the CPC law, 44B states that all documents must be given written in hand, 10 copies, 10 copies, what, I remember, not electronic material. Not thinking by the state, it's haven't been signed that says that electronic material is acceptable. I've already had this discussion with the town clerk. Until the law changes with the CPC and we make any amendments, it's still states, 10 copies. That's why we do. I just got these things this morning.
I realize that. I'm the one that hand-delivered them because of, you know, service.
You know, I worked very hard and diligently on this and I looked at the numbers and I have a crunch on this, just about the numbers I had before and the opportunity and the time to get it done.
Mr. Chairman, that a minute?
What is this?
Are you done, Tim?
Yes, I thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Woods. I also followed up on a couple of them.
Good.
Items?
Items that he said that he was endorsed by, it really doesn't matter who endorses this. But I did notify somebody else who was on a committee and asked if they voted on that, and they told me no. But it.
You didn't know that?
Yeah, you know, to me, I've talked to Mr. Smith several times about this playground. And I told him I would support 100% if the playground was outback. I live in the neighborhood, Mr. Pruitt lives in the neighborhood, and he's also on a historical commission. And this is a very modern-looking playground, and it doesn't really fit the character of our neighborhood. And we are also working, our neighborhood is working with the historical commission to be designated a historical district. And I, as a member of the CPC, would endorse and support any type of playground outback. And Mr. Smith, I told him this, none, time and time again. And, you know, he's still running with his plan. I'm going to vote no on this myself, personally. But I would wholeheartedly support anything outback. Anything. And, you know, I went to the meetings that he had outside, and most of the people there, including some of my neighbors, wanted outback. Myself, my wife, my neighbors, the woodcocks next door, all the people who have lived in that village for all their lives, Mr. Pruitt's lived there his whole life. You know? Because we don't want to see nothing modern looking next to all our old houses. Every person in that, in that neighborhood is over 100 years old. That original facility, that was built in 1960 by George Miller in the town of Dayton, was put back specifically because of the same two issues. You only had, not even half of the cars that run the road there, okay? That's my first one. And again, I will support a playground if it's outback, this, absolutely, because I keep hearing about this situation with, if a kid goes down outback and the playground's outback, how are you going to get in there? Those gates are not locked. You try, I see the emboltes, they've never had a situation arise until, matter of fact, I was in.
It only takes once.
And you can get through that fence and drive directly back there. The reason why years ago those fences were locked because fools in the neighborhood decided they were going to drag their cars out there and change their oils on that basketball court.
And I like to say it.
And he can testify to that.
I was on Park and Rec for nine years, Mr. Ryan's on Park and Rec for nine years, so we're well aware of what goes on in parks, who gets hurt, and, you know. I think the worst accident we've seen is somebody got 33 stitches in their leg on America Round. But Mr. Digit says another meeting to go to, I have another meeting to go to, Mr. Ryan says another meeting to go to.
I think we say a quick piece about outback for several, I did send in another piece of documentation, I believe it was at a January meeting, stating the facts of why we.
Oh, was that?
Wanted it out front. When you're talking, regardless of somebody fell and hurt their wrist 10 years ago, and that's the only thing that's happened, it only takes one time that a child is having a heart attack and getting through baseball fields. No, I'm just saying, are you going to?
And my best, no.
Let him finish.
You want to have a ballot of.
Mr. Ryan, can you wait for him to finish?
You want to have a ballot of.
Mr. Ryan, can you wait for him to finish?
No, if you are, like, I mean, you're.
Ask the chair to do it.
You know, guys do the same.
All right, guys, all right. Let's try it. Why can't you have that? I mean, quite the effort.
Me doors. Ask for a ballot.
We got to have order.
You're going to go in, Mr. Ryan?
I forgot my gavel.
One minute, please, one minute.
Let's have some order, please.
I don't have the gavel. And they're going to ask to take those out, the police department was asked to take out those wooden barriers because they're, they really are against the law. And you're not going to stop the cops from going through those. You're not going to stop the cops from going to steal that really? For that now.
All right, there's also one.
That's the point.
One is parallel to traffic, so nobody's coming in this way. One. Two, accessibility.
You ever seen anybody step up from the other side of that street?
Can I please finish? Accessibility quickly is also on the forefront of why we want it out front.
It was.
Your older plan requires 400 feet of walkway, and it was said to me by you that sometimes you need to just help the kids get back there. As a parent with a kid with a disability, I suck it up every single day.
You suck it up, my nephew, my uncle, you don't, my friend.
With a disabled child.
I do six months in a year, my friend. It changes sometimes.
Sometimes it's not.
I'm like, Mr. Ryan.
And delivering a child to a playground and let them play.
Let's get, let's get back to it.
The old plan, which numbers to numbers, oxholes, never included a plan to put an accessible path to the.
Yes, it did, yes, it did, and there was 400 feet of asphalt that was going to be paved to go all back yesterday was. And the fence, and the light was going to be moved in 6 feet, so you had an access way to get back there.
I just want to say, I want to. Thank you. Mr. Chairman.
Like I said.
I just want to say one.
Let's be calm.
We are all calm.
Thank you.
You're very calm.
I'm calm, I'm cool, you're calm. Yeah. Okay. I try to be right.
No, no, but I understand it's emotional and there is a lot to it. I just want to say something quick. My grandson, believe it or not, I can relate to the handicap thing because he has, he has spina bifida. But he had, his mother had the operation in utero, so he's, he does still have a few maladies that we deal with. But he does, you know, he, we've used the park here by the, by the town hall. But I'm, I, you know, I, I have to say, I completely understand why we would want to support it, but there are some other issues.
If it was outback, we would support.
Apparently, that's a strong, yeah, that's a strong thing.
Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we vote on this.
Mr. Chairman, may I have an opportunity to speak, please?
If you can make it brief, Mr. Rosa.
Well, why? Why would I have? It didn't have to be brief. Shouting, carried out like crazy people.
Couldn't.
All right.
But I mean, you guys, you want to come up and talk?
Yeah, sure, fine. So, we heard from a couple of the members of the board here who have had many, many opportunities to speak to this in the past. Mr. Ryan has put in a lot of good work in his, previously as a, as a member of the Parks and Rec Commission. And so, none of this is a surprise, but, but here's what has been going on. What you hear in this conversation is once again, the ambushing of the proposal to have a playground in North Dayton. I don't have any children, my kids aren't going to, my grandkids even probably will never play there. But a lot of the people in Dayton would like a playground there, they've come out in the past and stated that. So, if you enjoy the entertainment provided by a couple of members of this board who had very little to say in previous meetings leading up to this one, I hope you enjoy their display this evening. And you know exactly who is blocking the town of Dayton, particularly the people who want to enjoy a playground there. Now you know exactly who is blocking you.
No one's blocking you anything, Mr. Rosa, you're absolutely incorrect in what you were stating, sir.
Yeah, you've been recognized by the community.
Please rescind your statement, sir. You are absolutely incorrect.
You're blocking it now, Mr. Ryan. You're incorrect. They're blocking it now.
Oh, no, we're having a discussion.
I'd just like to say that.
Is there any more?
We will keep a place card on hand for Park and Rec for them to come back with another proposal outback, and I can only speak.
Parks and Rec Commission is not interested in putting another proposal for the park outback.
You can ask the town to pay for it at the annual town meeting, maybe they'll help you.
Well, first your board has to vote on it.
Right, let's put it to a vote, huh? Is everybody ready to vote? I am. I'm going to call.
That hasn't been seconded.
Well, I will.
You make a motion.
I'm in commotion to call for the vote.
I'll say it there.
Seconded by Mr. Woods. Call the vote.
Roll call vote.
Dave?
No. I haven't thought about it, but playground in the front, this is my opinion.
Well, so.
We're voting now.
We're, yes, but we're voting on.
What are we voting on? We're voting to approve or deny. Approve or deny?
I think there's some confusion, because I, if he vote, he just said.
We're voting now, Mr. Smith. Thank you.
Okay, let me just stop, sorry, let me say, I approve. That's just my vote, thank you.
Adele?
I really want to, I've decided I want to see a playground there.
We're going to have a playground there. We're going to have a nice playground there, nicer than this, and this doesn't fit though.
Can I think of anything?
Of course.
You're going to have a discussion.
Of course.
Are we voting, are we having a discussion, Mr. Woods?
Adele, how do you vote?
No.
No?
I, I, it's a hard one for me, because I want to see a playground, but.
Who's going to build a nice playground, since you guys have discussed?
In the right place.
Deny.
Deny.
Deny. Deny.
Deny.
I approve. As a chairman, I just, my personal feeling is I'd like to see it, but I cannot, I can't vote other people's vote, I have to go with the vote is. I support it, but if I don't have the votes, then we can't move forward.
All I'm going to say is, I got three grandchildren, they're probably, when they're going to see that playground, and I'm not being, these issues are me, probably when they're in college. We've been at this for a long time. I know we have something going in the back, it got blocked, we have another opportunity, but we don't need discussion, you guys voted.
I don't think, I, just to wrap it up, I would have to say, don't be, don't be, you could always come back, you know, you know what I mean? Try again, I mean, I don't have the votes.
No, I don't.
So, I, I'm for it, I'm the chairman, I support it, I've got a grandchild with dysphoria, but if I don't have the votes, I can't, we can't, unfortunately.
Are we recording you as in approving this? Is that your vote tonight?
I was for it, yeah, I'm for it.
So, that was your vote tonight? That will be recorded in the minutes of the meeting?
That's fine.
Okay, I'm just looking for clarification.
But I don't have, I don't have the votes to pass to move it forward.
I understand.
What was the final vote, Joe?
Five to four.
I'm a little bit displeased with the fact that you wanted to, in the middle of voting, have a discussion, be going to claim to another member that you're going to have a better playground and a better location, when you are not on Parks and Rec.
But I think she felt so.
But that, because you weren't in a discussion, you were in voting.
Yeah.
So, you asked me to be quiet because you were in voting.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion.
The vote is done.
I'm making a motion to rescind the original vote, we had a moment, maybe re-vote, so there's no discussion.
Is that all right?
Involved in the vote.
We'll do that.
Yeah, they have, I'm making a motion.
Motion's been made to redo the vote, rescind the previous vote, and re-vote, so I need a second.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Rosa. Now, we, we have to vote on the motion. David?
Mr. Parker?
Approve.
No.
Adele?
We're voting on the motion.
This is to move the.
To move. We're going to re-vote.
Hooked on this.
Yeah, sorry, it's a motion.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Ryan? He said aye. Oh, Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Myself.
Could you read the motion?
Yeah.
Motion to call. Apparently, can you repeat it?
Motion on the floor to.
Rescind the previous vote.
Rescind the previous vote and re-vote on the matter.
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Mr. Digits?
Aye.
Mr. Rosa?
I approve.
And I approve, so it's unanimous, we have one, no?
No, I approve.
Oh, everybody's, so it's unanimous, okay. So, that's where we're at with that, sir.
Okay, so.
Then we can't move ahead with the funding.
No, so you have a, no, we're going to re-vote on the first motion that was made for denial, is what my motion was, to rescind the first original denial vote, re-vote again, to discuss it.
All right, so we're at that point where we can re-vote? Yes. Okay.
Correct, Chairman, just, just be clear, are we going to say yes to the playground, or we going to approve the playgrounds, we're all the same.
It's either.
We're denying, yeah, you deny the thing moving forward to the, in other words, it's not going to go to town.
You're denying the next step to go for the application for funding?
That was not my understanding.
I'm confused what you're saying. Let's make it clear. We're either approving the motion and stating clearly.
Okay, my motion, Mr. Digits, was to rescind the original vote of the body.
No, 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 not that one, the, the vote to either accept or approve the playground up front.
No, this is, this is. We believe to listen to what's going on there.
We made sure that.
To approve or deny a application for eligibility, that's not a question of whether the playground's going up front or going outback.
Okay.
That is why we're here.
Application as it stands.
Yes. Approve or deny.
Okay, so let's call for the vote.
You want to start with me?
Okay, Mr. Marvell?
Approve.
Adele? Mr. Ryan?
Deny.
Mr. Pruitt?
Deny.
Mr. Digits?
I, I'm, I approve, I'm for it.
Deny.
Deny?
Deny.
Okay. So, what do we have, Cam?
I have got, uh, it's, so.
Six.
Yeah, I don't think it is.
Think we got a six tonight.
Rosa, yeah, six tonight?
I think it was two that.
What do you think?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
So, five to four, five to four, ma'am.
Five to four.
Six, six, three.
The chairman of the board.
Six. Chairman, chair doesn't vote unless it's tie-breaking.
That's what I thought, too.
You don't vote unless it's tie-breaking.
All right.
Chairman voted on all matters.
I thought I could vote on all matters.
Chairman voted on all matters, and it's a stay-along, unless it does come down to tie-breaking, then he has been decided.
I was for it.
That's only if it's a tie.
Not a tie.
The chair votes.
Okay. Are we clear, everybody's good?
We're good.
All right. Would you like to move on to the next item?
Good idea.
Basically, it's just an update on.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Digit. So, it's, the approval on the, just some information, an update on the historical. She put in another thing for $25,000. And it was because the state couldn't fund her and the grant, so we're going to move forward, we'll see if we want to. It's going to go the next step for approval, so it should be in your packet. I think it was $25,000 for, it's the program she's been working on.
Because we're going to.
It was previously approved, like, obviously.
Yeah, it was approved.
So, we just got to go from the full, we're going to.
Yeah, because that, that, that thing she works with won't match it, they won't fund it, she got denied because she. They don't want to. She fell, yeah, you, you want to speak on it?
Yeah.
Because you're on that committee.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
They, as opposed to, they don't entertain two years in a row, the same body for the same sort of project, so. You shouldn't say the next year that they might approve, who knows, I don't know.
So, she just wants us to consider us funding it to help her, because she's in the middle, you know, she's in wrapping up.
It's not going to be the $1,500 reimbursement like what.
Yeah, we won't get it, so we got to pay the whole load.
So, she would have to come back in with an application for funding for $25,000, so. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion that we send an application for funding to the Dayton Community Wide Restored Property Survey Update Phase Two to the Dayton Historical Commission.
Is there a second?
I want to know what.
I second that.
Okay.
What are you doing, what is it?
It's going to happen, so what happens now with this is, since we're going to have to pay the full freight, we have an application for funding, that's why we're doing this, doing the application, moving forward from application.
Another application?
Yes, an application for other, but I didn't have to.
Deny.
It's all pretty easy by the law.
Okay. Okay, I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah. You're right. Here it comes. Yeah, you should go back and look at some of that stuff.
I'll ask you now.
That's all, Mr. Chairman, just been a motion on the floor to approve the application for funding for the Dayton Historical Commission for the Dayton Community Wide Restored Property Survey Update Phase Two.
I'll second that. Okay, so, any other, any discussion? Let's move on to vote. Mr. Marvell?
Aye.
Approve.
Adele? Mr. Ryan? Aye.
Mr. Pruitt?
Aye.
Mr. Woods?
Mr. Erickson?
Aye.
Mr. Rosa?
I'm not voting.
Mr. Rosa is not voting? And I, I'm for it. What do we got, we got one, no?
No, you abstain.
One abstention, I stand correct. One abstention, and one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Seven aye, one abstention. I really don't have any new business, but I'd like to have the financial report on the new business that, please, you always did a lot, there's been a lot of work done here, and we're working on some ideas. So, I want to turn the, it's good, the new account and everything, so I want to turn it over to Mr. Erickson for the.
Great, great, exactly, before we do the first status of these two applications.
Those are in, I talked to him yesterday, and somebody said he was in a hurry, but then when I talked to him, he says he wasn't in a big hurry. So, those are in the, they're not on the agenda to be voted on. They're in the pipeline, really, so he's not.
I talked to him yesterday too, and he was tied up with some.
Yeah, he, because I called him because somebody told me he was upset that it wasn't moving, but I called.
How long are we supposed to move it, so we're going to move it to the funding phase?
That would be the next.
Yeah, next month.
Okay?
He was tied up with some family stuff.
Yeah, next meeting, I'll get a digest of this, yeah.
Right.
Just had some logistical issues which are all.
And we, I support it, I support.
Yeah, I'm all for it when he's dealing with that, I think it's a great idea.
Cheap black potatoes.
Yeah. Because if you've been in that vault or down in that cellar.
You've been in it.
Basement, no, I haven't, I've looked in, I haven't been in it. But the door was open when I looked in, but he showed me all the boxes, there's a lot of stuff, he's got, he's got some plans, I think it's good for the town.
It's a great project, it really is.
I don't know, some of that paperwork comes back to the British in there.
Yeah.
You know, where it, yes, you know?
So, that's the history of the town, and it's worth preserving, so we're going to take care of that.
Again, they bring projects to go forward, but so here's why, you're mindful of the cycle.
Yeah, we're in.
Vote in March, we have to draft one article.
Exactly.
And we have enough time to get it out. We can actually have a placeholder set aside by the board.
And you had mentioned that before about the placeholder, thank you. So, Mr. Chairman, we put on it next month with Pichico coming back? I think we'll work, that'll come on the agenda next month, and we can move that along. Okay.
If you're lacking for the others.
I'll say, he didn't wanna come in, he wasn't ready to come in.
No, that's okay.
Yeah.
I mean, we probably need him next month.
We will.
We'll get him in here. Just move with this thing, you know, so we don't lose it.
Get the word out.
All right.
It goes to financials.
Financial report. Do you have a financial report? Anyone wants to get in touch with me?
Thank you.
Electronic copy. And I appreciate, uh, Janelle Vining for putting this together. Uh, and if you wanted to look at this, you wanna look at the, uh, side that says the year ending twenty-twenty-two. So you have twenty-twenty-one on one side, the previous report, twenty-twenty-two on the other side.
All right.
And the number we want to look at.
This is small, man.
It's actually easier to do on Zoom.
Yeah, I remember. That was easier, yeah. I like Zoom.
Twenty-first.
I need a magnifying glass.
All right, there is a column about three quarters of the way over called total available funds balances. At the bottom of that column, that is intended to be a number representing all the money we have to spend as of now. And then it states that that number is. I'm gonna qualify that number, but right now it's a number, uh, uh, somewhere under the city of nine hundred and five thousand dollars. Then we have, moving to the right of that, there is, um, revenue, anticipated revenue from the CPC act for the current fiscal year. When we get all the way over to the far bottom right there, we have a number slightly over one million dollars. Now, this number is a little bit high for certain reasons. Also, if you look at the first column on the report, we now see, um, that we've removed the town, the items for town meeting, uh, warrant articles from, twenty-twenty. And we now have the articles that were approved at town meeting twenty-one, article, uh, fourteen, which is just an accounting article, and article fifty, which was the preservation consultant for phase one of the, uh, historical survey. So that is, uh, the business from the most recent town meeting. So that update is there, which is great. The next column to the right of that is, uh, fund balance reserved for encumbrances. And what seems to have happened there is that I think there are certain encumbrances which have been omitted there. Uh, so we really need to take that number, hundred ninety-five thousand, five hundred, and subtract it from all our available balances. That is, uh, that, uh, the entries have somehow disappeared there to cover some things which have been voted by town meeting, and the money has not been spent yet. It's still sitting in our account. One of them is the, uh, Bolt Ramp Project, Elm Street Bolt Ramp. The other is, uh, one which we, uh, bring up a contentious subject again. The, uh, annual town meeting did vote to allocate funds for lighting and fencing improvement in anticipation of a playground project. That right?
Correct.
So that is still pending. That has not been taken back by town meeting. Uh, finally, there is the ag restriction on Elm Street. That was, I understood that did, money did go out of our account, so.
Yes, it did.
I'm not sure that it was, now the way this report is drawn, I'm not sure that has actually been subtracted from our balances.
Is she aware of that?
I, I, I asked her, uh, yeah, I gave her a call. I asked her, and she's looking into it, so. We just got this report on Monday, and we're going over it with it.
Good. You're doing great with that.
Yeah, the next item there is called reserved for expenditures. That is also money we don't have to at our disposal, because that is reserved for the Lincoln Woods Electrical Panel Project. So if you take out those two items, you have really a better idea of what our real available funds are, uh, which would be reduced that by about, um, three hundred, right, three hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars. So if you remove three hundred and thirty-one thousand from our other balances, we're more in the ballpark of, um, a little bit under six hundred thousand dollars available for spending. Now, and then, um, we're adding another hundred thousand for incoming. Uh, we'd be up around seven hundred thousand dollars, a little under seven hundred thousand dollars, total available balances. So that's the report, and we're, um, pending. Hopefully by next month, I'll have, uh, an update.
That's good.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dave. You did a great job. It's really awesome.
It is, isn't it? Though, trying to figure that out.
I think it's.
Chairman?
I think it's going for the town account to figure it out.
Exactly, so.
Question, do all the members get the updates from the CPC bullish? It should be on the member list. It should be sent, sent out emails.
Yeah, I'm getting mine. Isn't there thirty more percent coming or something?
Yes, it's been high this year again. Uh, during the time that life sciences, because life sciences in the state, they're nice, they are allocated. Their number is higher than what expected. They're talking about twenty million extra dollars going to CPC, not including money allocated to real life sciences also, wow. Give another.
And that's excellent. And even with all this COVID, a lot of money still came in somehow. So, but anyhow. The other thing is, I did talk to the town administrator about the budget, that five percent, he said he's gonna get back. It should be no big deal. I've done that every year.
Done every year. We put it together ourselves. Just a question.
Uh, he said he should take care of it.
Well, we didn't do that on heat.
Yeah, well, I meant.
This year, uh, we have to figure out what this, this, uh, robotized salary gonna be for next year. Figure those ones in, if you want money around in professional and technical lines for dues may go up. If your dues goes up.
Say fifty.
From CPC, depending on how much monies that you take in on your yearly average now. So since we get into the hundred thousand projectile percentages now, our numbers we have to pay for our dues go a little more to, to the coalition. It's all progress. That's how they pay the salaries to their people.
But there are aspects to it.
To the coalition.
Oh, yeah, let me just continue with something. Go ahead. I'm gonna say this on camera. We've done this for many years, many, many years. We ran this program, okay? Not once did we ever have interference by any member of the Board of Selectmen. We are a quasi-government board, not run by the Board of Selectmen. If a member wants to join, you're more than welcome. You're open to public meetings. You're more than welcome, okay? But in regards to polling and going to members individually on shared items, you better watch yourself. That's an ethics problem. That's an ethics, and secondly, I just wanna say this, is that any document, because I've had this argument in discussion with many people, and one bets, not cheeseburgers, but other, other items. The Massachusetts State Law states that if you want to have any type of public hearing, it must be notified and put into the newspaper, not once but twice in the time dealing as yet. That is by law. Until the Massachusetts State Law comes down and changes, no electronic medium is really acceptable under the law. It must be hard documents, okay? So I've heard this, and this discussion's gone on through many committees in this, in this town, okay? Now.
Now, we did do the advertising.
You know, if I wanted to interfere with the Board of Selectmen, I'd be there on a Wednesday night, just like other many of the residents out, okay? Voicing their rights, okay? But I don't, we don't interfere with their business. I don't expect them to interfere with us. Okay, so Mr. Woods had this, it started right out of his home on Chase Street. Okay, and it was never a problem when Helen Good Life ran. It was never a problem when I ran it. I ran this for seven years. It reconstituted this CPC committee for you, the residents, to spend our monies the right way, because prior members of the Board of Selectmen wanted to try to disband it and take your monies out of these accounts.
Amen. That's the history.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Okay, anything else under new business? I don't have anything. Okay, let's schedule the next meeting. Thursday. Is everybody good with the six o'clock thing?
Very good.
I'm gonna leave it at six.
Yeah.
We can make it brief, get it out, get it over.
I'd like, um, our esteemed members, um, Mr. Marvell, he's also.
Working hard.
Running, you know, and, um, doing this for a while, he has allowed his help.
He wouldn't be going.
Maybe you guys at least give me patience while I'm trying to.
Thank you, Dave. So we wanna go to the third Thursday?
It's always.
That's St. Patty Day. But that's all right with me. I'm not Irish.
Anybody got a problem now?
Some people like it.
Say I don't.
No.
Well, put it this way, people, I'm sure, we got things to talk about.
Adele has a great staff.
So we still should be here.
Yeah, it's still gonna be important, and we need to show up, and we, we, we can still do the hybrid if you can't make it.
Yeah, let me know what you guys wanna do that day. You wanna do a hybrid, you get out earlier?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Everybody comfortable doing that?
Sure.
Yeah.